Right. And I'll try not to show favoritism. It's one time. Oh, my gosh. Mark's never feels like I've never let anyone put beer. Yeah. All right, I'd like to follow this meeting of the Jefferson School Board of Education to work, open it up. This is a regular board meeting. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it looks like it's ten after six when we are at the House Minister's School District Education Buildings. All right. Anna Winnebago. And then last, Vice President Strain. Here. Secretary Trino. Here. Board Member King.
Here.
Board Member Concha. Here. Thank you. Superintendent, would you introduce the power of the President of the United States?
Absolutely. Originally, we did have us due by the name of the nearly born out, but unfortunately fell ill. However, we do have someone who is here tonight by the name of Anastasia Anna Gomez from the Greater Comodos. She has been at our roots since kindergarten. Anna loves to tap dance. This is one of her favorite hobbies, and she's been practicing that for many years. She's very fond of math. My favorite subject. In fact, she would like to pursue the core content area as a career. That is amazing. And in addition, Anna and her family also own another bit Shih Tzu by the name of Mango. Anna is very excited to be transitioning to the sixth grade. In fact, her mother, Mrs. Father, Angela Gomez, is one of the most amazing artsy new teachers they've worked with. Our daughter is so fortunate to have such a wonderful family, greatest in schools. House Minister's School Board welcomes Anna Oates.
My full meeting agenda. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, what danger might it hold? If it is a tall, whether it is a yet, does it come out?
Thank you so much.
Now she will also brief the line of vote.
My end of knowledge with them. But as we start to forge more afternoon for you, we have become one more intention that is just that we are the first people and their professional colleagues. We acknowledge that we are on the physical convenience of the West Indian people within the detail of the House. But this acknowledgement will oblige as they will endure our ongoing efforts to respect the funding we organize on for reconciled and courtrooms with the West Indian people who blend along. We benefit from the displayed valor today.
Very good. Thank you so much for coming all the way from. Thank you for bringing me down. Awesome. You're welcome to stay or be here any, at any of our meetings. We love having you guys. All right, next is the approval of the meeting agenda. Oh, yeah, then if you have to, maybe you don't have to say it can get boring, trust me. All right. Next, we have the approval of meeting agenda. I have two changes that I need to present or ask for a motion and a second on it. You guys were on. Number one is under eight, number eight, H, letter H, understood in outcomes. We are going to have not just two principals or board coaches, but we're going to have four tonight. We're going to add South High School and emails to that. And then on L D, like David, I've been asked to move the approval of the January twenty-five, twenty-five financial report to our meeting with the finance director on March eighth, twenty twenty-five. What happened in my mind, I got motions to that effect. Do you want me to make one?
My first break. And I'll, I'll say this, I will always start correctly.
Yes.
The presentation forward for.
Which ones?
For the high school and.
Oh, I thought you wanted to invite, but it's all right. Oh, okay. Okay, scratch that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda with the correction of L B being moved to our meeting on March eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Our date is a Saturday.
Yeah.
Yes.
As we're doing, they're still moving on that.
Yeah, it's the finance committee. Nine o'clock.
Nine or nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Oh, that's right in the middle of our.
L D, like David.
Is that going to be during our CES training?
Is that what?
Is that going to be right in the middle of our CES training?
I don't know.
Because we have a proposed ITN running for March eighth or starting at eight o'clock through one fifteen to for us members that are of the CES training.
Um.
Well, that was during the.
Yeah, that is. Let's figure that out when we bring that up. And so I'm not, I'm going to make a different motion. I'm just going to approve, I'm going to ask to table the approval of the January twenty twenty-five financial report until a later date. We can figure that data out depending on what's happening on the news. In one second.
What was the H? Was superintendent?
Pardon?
Did you change the?
Yeah, it changed in the last ten minutes. So it's first thing that I suggested, which was the thought that we were going to have four presentations tonight. That has been rescinded, that part.
I would list up two.
The only, yeah, two tonight. So the only, the only motion on the table is to table, table January twenty twenty-five financial report approval until another meeting, until a future meeting.
And everything else is the same for the agenda?
Fine with me. It's fine with you guys. Oh, second. Okay. Anna. Board Member Concha.
Yes.
Board Member King.
Yes.
Secretary Trino. Yeah. Vice President. Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, next we have public comment. Does anyone want to read this? No. No? Okay, I'll read it. Public comment, any interested person may submit data, views, or arguments in writing to the board on any school-related topic by submitting their comments to the executive secretary on her I L. And it gives her email. At an individual, an individual or representative wishing to give public comments shall register prior to participating in public comment. Additionally, when registering for public comment, the speaker shall be required to identify the subject matter of their proposed comment. Speakers are allotted three minutes or an amount otherwise designated by the board president beginning of the meeting. The board president, in his or her sole discretion, may shorten or lengthen the comment period of time to ensure that the meeting is efficiently and promptly conducted. All speakers are required to abide by all time limitations. All speakers are strongly encouraged to avoid personal attacks, to utilize all administrative avenues for conflicting resolution before bringing issues to the board to avoid identifying students and comments and to present all comments professionally and respectfully. If you are an individual with a disability who is in need of a reader, an outside qualified sign language interpreter, or any other form of auxiliary aid or serve, attend or participate in the hearing or meeting, please contact the office of the superintendent, which is the phone number, at least one week before the meeting or as soon as possible. I also want to note that the Board of Education is not allowed to address public comments during the public comment. And this evening, we can, we can listen, but we can't address it. All right, do we have anyone wishing, wishing to speak at a public moment? There you go. Hi, Mr. Stephen Paul.
Welcome. Stephen Paul. Good evening. I, I say what I'm about to say in the context of our present electoral situation. And the sort of naked authoritarianism is rife. It's just astonishing. Just about this time, three years ago, March, April, twenty twenty-two, I outlined briefly at a county commission meeting what I feared and saw as impending threats to our democracy, specifically the threat of authoritarianism, as expressed in white Christian nationalism and the larger threat of theocracy. I spoke of individuals and groups who would resort to physical violence in order to demonstrate their support. Groups like the Proud Boys, the O Keepers, and Three Percenters, groups that preached and supported white Christian nationalism, and a theocratic rule nation ruled by a Christian by them. I also spoke of elected officials and teenagers who promote violence through policy, through legislation. And you would do like Senator Mitch McConnell, then a Republican Senate leader, and his associates and buddies to Coke Brothers. Now, just one of them. The Coke Brothers and the Congress, if we get together, and we probably still do, manually or semi, and we could talk about how they can influence through the judicial departments and how they can get judges appointed. What I feared has come true in an extent that I've never dreamed possible. Kennedy with Fox views, House Speaker Mike Johnson said the following, quote, "I am a Bible reader and Christian." Someone asked me today in the media, they said, "It's curious, people are curious. What does Mike Johnson think about any issue under the sun?" I said, and this is Johnson speaking, "Well, go pick up a Bible off your shelf and read it. That's my worldview," end, end quote. The explicit threat of Johnson's theocratic world, he is, I say, frightening and dangerous. Our civic duty and violent separation of church and state, the wall in quote unquote, a separation between church and state, Thomas Jefferson declared, require us with a challenge such an alarming worldview to every turn of its ugly theocratic cab. In his first speech on the House floor after being elected speaker, Johnson said in part, quote, "I don't believe there are any coincidences in a matter like this. I believe that scripture, the Bible, is very clear that God is the one who raises up those in authority. He raised up each of you, all of us, and I believe that God has allowed him to gain each and every one of us to be here at this specific moment." Referring to the, end quote, referring to the Republican caucus, he said, quote, "I don't know if all my colleagues here, what I told the Republicans in that room last week, I don't believe there are any coincidences in a matter like this. I mean, scripture, the Bible, is very clear that God is the one who raises up those in authority. He raised up each of you, all of us, and I believe that God has allowed him to gain each and every one of us to be here at this specific moment," end quote. At a board meeting not long ago, I questioned where students can get nudes, where they get their nudes, how they stay in the board, knowing that TikTok is the likely quote unquote go-to. If I remember correctly, in early twenty twenty-two, January or February, a handful of T K one high school students participated in a public discussion with an audience of questions and thoughts regarding social media, digital media literacy, and security at the Palace Library, how parents and responsible adults can exercise.
Stephen, three minutes is up, so could you try and wind it up just so we can?
I, yeah, I can, I can.
One more minute, please.
Okay.
Okay, because we have a long agenda. Thank you.
An exercise from our side of the children's relationship, the students acknowledge and describe TikTok as a rep. They couldn't explain their TikTok fascination, maybe better thought of as addiction. I've heard the phrase TikTok challenges and have read it sadly about challenges that at times led to death or some manner of destruction. Last December, the TikTok platform was implicated as the forum for corrupting elections in Romania, which as a result recalcolds I'll issue my own challenge, tell us as students, investigate the claims of undue election, influence, and see how you deal about TikTok after doing so. I'll alter the following internet sites as a place to begin your investigations. There's a, there's one paragraph that I'd like to finish. It's Martin, Dr. Martin.
Okay, please, and then we're good to be done.
Near the conclusion of his book title, Where Do We Go From Here, Chaos or Community? Dr. King says the following, quote, "A true revolutionary values will soon look uneasily on the glaring contrast of poverty and wealth." He goes on, "America, the richest and most powerful nation in the world, will need the way of this revolutionary values. There is nothing to prevent us from paying adequate wages to schoolteachers, social workers, and other servants of the public to ensure that we have the best available personnel in these positions, which are charged with the responsibility of guiding our future generations. There is nothing but a lack of social vision to prevent us from paying inadequate wages to every American citizen, whether he be a hospital worker, laundry worker, pays the day labor. There is nothing except short-sightedness to prevent us from guaranteeing any minimum and livable." One sentence.
Just a second. I'm cutting it now, and we appreciate you coming. I very much appreciate your opinions and your First Amendment rights. From in the future, could you try and practice it and try and keep it to three minutes for us, please? That would be great. We'd appreciate it. Because I hate to cut you off, you know, it's like doing that.
But that's okay. I'd rather be cut off.
You would?
Yeah, I'd much rather be cut off in the midst of trying to explain something. I'd like to have this introduced and made part of the, the record. I hope that it can be scanned so that people can read it. I've also included a long essay by Dr. King, also titled Where Do We Go From Here?
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm sure that you know that I, how I feel about it. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, now, item G A, we have a treat tonight. We have the former state auditor here. He's going to present on the dark side of social media. It's Brian Colone. You have to tell them when they'll be there.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Your first.
Yes, definitely.
Well, that's inside, I just want to start out, Madam President, board members. Since Mark is not here, we can just.
That's okay. Planning to tip. Bump him out.
Bump him up. I, I just want to just say in advance that your secretary and superintendent were just really phenomenal working with my team to give me the opportunity to present tonight. And I appreciate their openness and facilitating this opportunity to present.
I appreciate you coming on.
You bet. My pleasure. So this is, and I'll leave a few of my business cards right here in case anybody would like. And this evening, thank you for the introduction. My name is Brian Colone, and I was honored to serve as the state auditor of New Mexico. And I'm currently really thrilled to be able to be in the position I'm in now to continue serving people in all thirty-three counties of New Mexico. I'm the managing partner for Singleton Tribe Law. We are a law firm that operates nationally, but with a strong New Mexico presence. We have offices in Mora, Las Vegas, Las Cruces goes online in April. We have a substantial office in Albuquerque, and we have an office in my hometown of Los Lunes, which will tell you why I'm also very comfortable every time I come to Taos, because the Los Lunes Tigers not only share your name for our mascot, we use the same logo and mascot iteration there. So it really is a pleasure to be here, and I want to talk to you about one area of our litigation. And for those of you, Madam President and board members, several of you were at the school board conference where I presented this information and this similar slide deck. And so I'm going to be very, very brief in my presentation and allow the board to answer questions. And, but I'm going to go through these slides. Do I get a clicker or do I just get to look to you?
Just let me know next slide.
All right, that's perfect. So this really is about the dark side of social media. I heard some comments about TikTok, and social media is pervasive. Whether you are ninety or whether you are nine, it is a front and center in our worlds. I care for and oversee my mentor's widow, who's ninety-three years old, and she still wants to be on Facebook on a daily basis. And I've also raised a son who was in public schools, and my wife is an educator in one of the deepest pockets of poverty in Albuquerque. And yet, in the deepest pocket of Albuquerque, deepest pocket of poverty in Albuquerque, every one of our students has a cell phone, and they all want to be on social media. And it is continuing to impede my wife's ability to deliver education. And I know your educators and each of you as parents or grandparents know what it's like to have a younger person and how you have to push back against this social media engagement. This leads to mental health issues. And on the next slide, we set forth a few areas of concern related to social media addiction. This is defined, it is recognized in the mental health and social well-being sectors of our country by professionals regarding social media addiction. On the following page, I provided each of you electronically and in your hand copies. And on this slide here, which is the next slide, the symptoms to identify social media addiction in our children in particular. On the following slide, and we're going to go through the slides very quickly because.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
You're awesome, and I appreciate you. But these are some of the consequences. And I'll pause for a moment to just say that sadly, each of us, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, staff and leaders of our schools, we can recognize these symptoms in students whom we're concerned about or family members whom we're concerned about. And the science supports the idea that this ties back to the algorithms that were created by these social media platforms who put profits in front of our children's and our families' well-being. So if you go to the next slide, it speaks to the idea that this has been recognized at the national level by our surgeon general. And this is the report that he put out in twenty twenty-three, which I think I have provided to the board as well. The following slide indicates what is probably also not a surprise, but ninety-five percent of our adolescents use at least one social media platform and thirty-three percent self-report. Self-report. And if you know anything about statistics and data collection, self-reporting, you're so nice. Thank you. She's like, you're going too fast for me. I'm like, look at your own slides. Thank you so much. Thirty-three percent self-report using social media constantly. It is unbelievable. So this was the surgeon general's call to action, which are all excellent steps. But what we want to talk about is how big tech companies should be held accountable on this next slide. And that's what our law firm and several law firms are doing around the country. I've taken up it as a personal target, Mr. President. Let's see, sir. Let's see. As you know, we are representing school districts nationally in this litigation. This is something that we call in our firm and my partners and I, we refer to this as righteous litigation. It may or may not result in recoveries for our clients, but it's not going to be because we didn't try. This litigation has been consolidated, what's called multi-district litigation. All our clients in New Mexico, we've made it a personal mission to not just represent the normal players who are at the table for recoveries when school district have been harmed, which are your big three. While we do represent large districts like San Jose Schools, like Las Cruces Public Schools. For me, and I understand I have two minutes, and I appreciate that warning.
No.
Mr. Superintendent.
Mark, there could be.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that. I'd definitely be respectful of your agenda. But I've made a personal commitment. My law partners have agreed to my commitment, which is we want to represent all school districts in New Mexico because all of our students deserve a seat at the table. I grew up in rural New Mexico. I know that sometimes we're last in line, which means we're last in time, which means we're last to receive. And so I've made a point to represent as many school districts who will hear from me. I'm very honored to say that every school district and every school board I've presented to New Mexico so far has brought us on to represent the district. And that means not just those big schools, but school districts like Benja School, school districts like Mora, and school districts like, like West Las Vegas, which for me is very rewarding. These are the, these are the companies we're going after. It's TikTok, Snapchat, YouTube. Ninety-five percent of our children are on YouTube. Sixty-seven percent, I think, under reports, how many of our children are on TikTok? And I think the fifty-nine percent also under reports or Snapchat. There are lots of things social media platforms could do differently, such as parental engagement, such as time limit controls, all these things they choose not to do because they choose to put the profits in front of our family's safety. This is, the numerosity is also under reported because this slide is a few months old. There are hundreds of governmental entity plaintiffs and school districts along with thirty-five attorneys general from around the country who have engaged in this litigation nationwide. And I, my law firm represents districts in California. We also signed on, I was telling Dr. Layton, that we signed on, I'm in Theo's school district outside of El Paso and looking at some other school districts there as I work with the Mexican-American School Board Association in their outreach. These are the claims, negligence and public nuisance. Has a lot to do about the algorithms that they knew or should have known was going to have this addictive impact on our children and on our families. These are the damages we're looking to recover for our school districts. And the next steps are engaging counsel. We will work with your team to be as respectful of their time and the process as possible to not be a burden, but to be a support and advance those claims at the national level. This is not a short-term fix. It is not a short-term litigation, but it is something that we're interested in doing at no cost to the district if there's no recovery, which is why everybody says yes, because the exposure is zero. And I'll close with saying this, and I'm right at seven, and that's, so I'm thirty seconds over. But I'll just say this, because of the superintendent of Las Cruces Public Schools and a great engagement I had with their district, he said, "Look, we think this issue is so important, we actually want to engage with you, not just for the litigation, but we want to use this as an opportunity to educate our community. Would you come with your team to co-host with our school district town halls so that we can help our parents and our families understand the impact of social media on their children and what it does for the learning environment in our schools?" So I'll close with that, that we, of course, said yes. So we're going to be bringing in our experts, my colleagues who are in litigation to put on, at no cost to the district, town hall, in collaboration with the school boards to help educate the communities about this work. With that, I rest. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, thanks for the opportunity to present. I said the question. You passed.
He's the, President Flores wanted me to continue for a while.
Thank you, Madam President.
You can address me anyway you want to.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. I was so impressed when I heard this. It was a year or two ago that we heard. And I would like to open it up to the board for any comments or questions that you all have.
Mr. Colone.
I'll put your slide back up.
What are we looking at? And let's just hypothetically give us a timeline. Is it going to be? I guess, is it, is it going to be in Denver? Are you going to request the, or what state are you looking at?
And Madam President, Board Member King, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, the litigation is happening in the East Coast, and it is difficult to project a timeline. It's a motions practice, and plaintiffs are still getting in line. So what happens is we'll work with your district to develop what's called a plaintiff's fact sheet that will go into the M D L. And then what you'll see is at some point, there'll be a tide that can't be pushed back, and there'll be enough plaintiffs at the table saying, "We're going to hold you accountable," that these social media companies will then start responding and looking at identifying opportunities to resolve some of the claims. And that, I would say, is probably a year or two down the road. This is not a short-term. It's not a short-term litigation. It's multi-district litigation. I can tell you that M D Ls that I've been involved in the past have taken a decade to resolve, so it is long-term.
Great.
But, but, but again, the litigation that we're doing, the reason we're deeply committed to it is not just from a financial standpoint. We believe this, that large corporations, the largest corporations in the world, right, that are owned by the richest people in the world, literally, do not respond to litigation in itself. They respond to profit. And at such point, they think there's enough people in line to hold them accountable. It then begins, becomes something they have to report up to their shareholders and could impact their bottom line. And that's when they look to resolve and change their behavior. And that, we're looking for parental controls, time limit controls. This is not just about money. It's about everybody, large and small school districts, standing up and saying, "You've got to take responsibility for what you've created."
Thank you. Member Concha.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. I think we're all in agreeance. So important, this is, do you have any in fact already or data or sources showing what schools are going to need to address the mental health related issues, how districts are utilizing this data and how they're helping the students? I mean, because if two years down the road, what are we doing in the interim till then?
Madam President, board members and Board Member Concha, I would just say that many school districts are embracing limited to no phones in the classrooms policies and having different types of tools and platforms to be able to utilize and facilitate that. Obviously, every district is looking at having that conversation in a thoughtful way that includes the community so that parents can continue to feel safe, even though they don't have constant access and communication with their students on their cell phones. And that is always the balance, is the safety of our children with also the ability to deliver what you work to deliver every day, which is high-quality education to the students of Taos.
So do you have access to that data? Like, we now have a school policy to like also enhance your, I guess, your argument that. Overall, I just, I guess I'm curious to see first deal with the data is like for every district in the school and how that impacts your life and showing, you know, that we are seeing improvement with the cell phone policies.
Sure. Madam President, members of the board, Board Member Concha, I would just say that I think it's too early to tell. As you're probably aware, it hasn't been till really this last year that school districts have actually had the fortitude and the confidence to engage community in this conversation and adopt different policies. So I don't think we have any data yet. I suspect anything that you hear is anecdotal, but I also, I also would agree, I'm in the camp that says doing nothing is not an option and that everything should be on the table for discussion. But I leave that to your superintendent. And that everything should be on the table for discussion. But I leave that to your superintendent, who's highly qualified, your team of principals that know what it is to be in the classroom and lead their teachers and educators every day and the education support staff. Um, and then you totally embrace the policy that's right for, for Tous.
Thank you. Madam Pres- yes, member, uh, Senator here.
By any chance, are they including the A I? In, in these, um, um, let me see, in Snapchat and TikTok, are they including the? And I say that because we were at, at a conference this last week. And, and we're having to, to write policy on, on the use of A I. And as, as innocent as it might seem and as, um, of, I can, to me, I am just a really, really very, um, leery of A I, as I am of all these others. And I think to myself, A I, and it, it will give you information. But again, there's all these algorithms that are going to be playing into, into, into the conversations or into the, into the, into the the, um, the work that is being generated by this A I machine. And where it's going to take the students, where it's going to take, uh, the teaching, um, profession. To me, that's very concerning. So if you all could look at how that fits into this, that would be really good. I, I'm just, I don't know if it's a company of its own because they're, right now they're, uh, they told us that there are a lot of, uh, several vendors that, that we could look at. And, and, and to be able to, to buy into a, um, into this type of software, but, um, I don't know, I don't know what to say about it because I, it is just too new. And it's just like jumping off a cliff for me.
Madam President, Madam Secretary, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, I couldn't agree more that, uh, that your concern is well-placed. I think we should be very skeptical and very concerned about the impacts of A I on education and the educational landscape. I mentor a lot of young students and a lot of young leaders. And it's become quite apparent to me that they all became great writers overnight, and I'm just not sure if that's what happened. Um, and I've given them back items and personal statements that I review for them for college applications. And said, look, let's be real, I know you didn't write this. I've been reading your writing for four years. Uh, this is not you writing this personal statement. So I do think it's a huge concern. Um, it is outside the scope of this litigation. But that's not to say that, uh, and much older, uh, Brian Cologne with less hair will be in front of you in five years saying, look, we need to hold these A I companies accountable for what they did. Right now, the profitability and the, uh, you know, these companies, it's open source. Uh, in fact, uh, you know, Board Member King might have even some more information on this, but, um, it's not litigation that we're contemplating as we stand here today. But I do think the impact is going to be substantial and unfortunately may be severe.
Well, thank you for at least considering it.
Hundred percent.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make some comments. I missed a good portion of your presentation, but I just want to acknowledge the importance of it and thank you for traveling to Tous to address the board and share with us, um, the initiative that you guys are taking. I really need, uh, from our board and, uh, from the community, want to commend yourself and those individuals that you know started this, this initiative, um. It comes to a point where, you know, we need to stand up as the adults for our kids and their, uh, mental health. Um, it is concerning. Um, you know, having young children who are now grown into young adults, I've seen, you know, how social media could impact um, their behaviors, um, even in adults. Uh, it's very, uh, concerning. And I just, uh, want to thank you for that, um. And the, the fact that we're taking a stand and, and ensuring that we are taking the necessary steps to hold these people accountable. They have more than enough money, um, the resources and means to uh, do the research and try to, uh, make social media for young adults a little bit more, a little healthier, you know, understanding that the way the world works, it sort of revolves around profits and and those type of things. So, um, we want to support you. Uh, thank you for, for this and, um, I guess a question for me and, and probably covered on this, how can Tous, um, in in short summary, you know, support this initiative? What do we need to do?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. President. Members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, uh, the, the, the procedure that takes place at this point is if you, if your board agrees that you're receptive to this idea, we would ask that on your next, uh, regularly scheduled board meeting, you put for action approval of engaging Singleton Tribe to represent the school district in this litigation. And then I'll present the contract to your superintendent for review, and then the superintendent would, uh, engage in the contract, uh, with your approval. And, and we proceed to represent and then we take the steps to move forward, uh, to include you in the litigation.
Madam Chair, if I may ask, would the board be of consensus to entertain that for our next meeting?
Uh, President Ford, just prior to that, just want to make sure, uh, we'll go through the procurement process, just to be sure, uh, either quotes or depending on what the amounts, we just wanted to put it channels, channel so that we can bring that.
Do you have taken temperature reading on the board? Does anyone have any? Does everyone want to move forward?
Yeah, we're just giving a temperature consensus.
Well, Mr. Cologne said about, um, in regards to any engagement, I believe that that's, you know, the kids know more than the parents. So it'd be great for you to, like you're, uh, you're going to help Los Cruces in doing some type of, uh, yeah, we need, we need, uh, parent involvement, uh, workshop, town halls, wherever you want to call it. Mr. Cologne, I think that would be huge because that's, that's where the rubber meets the road. I mean, uh, we talked to the, uh, the, uh, principals, the side administrators, I mean, just like their syllabus, their handouts, the, the students are way more ahead of the parents. I mean, there's people here with flip phones, I think you know, uh, Tous is definitely a rural community. So I would also, uh, President Mark, if, if, if you can also forward us some type of, because you said that was no charge, is it gratis, that we can look at implementing that? Um, maybe in the future, in the summer, that, you know, maybe have some, um, uh, announcements, uh, because they would be huge, because the parents, I think the parents are in the dark. Uh, some parents do know. A lot of parents, they don't know what their kids are doing on the phone, which is very unfortunate and it's I think they're way ahead of, uh, the parents. So that'd be awesome, Mr. Cologne.
I had a quick question for you. Thank you, Member King. Um, my question is, did, has Rolle Torres signed on to this? Our A G has.
Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, yes.
Okay, great.
And this was participating in the national litigation as well.
Happy, happy to hear that. Thank you. And what direction did you want to go on the next steps?
Uh, I think, you know, even hearing Superintendent, uh, and I think, you know, just to make sure we cover our bases, uh, uh, provide, so get some, essentially just following the upper channels and procurement and, um, Mr. Cologne being, uh, here and working with the law firm, I'm sure that there's, they've already covered a lot of the legalities of this, but if we could just double check and everything and, um, you know, with the school districts taking a lead in the cellphone policy that we instituted uh, most recently in the school year, and also, you know, with Tous and the, the way the board uh, is striving to be a leader in our, uh, state. And, you know, being leaders in our community, I think it's very important that the board does take that step, that we are approaching this as a, uh, very necessary step in to curbing the behaviors that we're seeing, you know, as we're just looking at the consequences and um, those fall right in line with what, what we, uh, know, filled in experience through this and, um, I'm very concerned for the future of our, you know, of our state and our nation, um, with the type of behaviors we see from our youth and the way, um, adults are very passive with the, the, you know, the new thing that comes on board, there's not really much regulations on that. Um, the studies are done after the fact. I mean, it is a form of, of, of a mental drug, you know, it's not a substance, but it is something that's materialistic and and, and substantive, you hold it in your hand and it just, um, it sucks, sucks the mind into that and, uh, I was at a, my niece's basketball game and, uh, really wish to, I'll go through the, the slides here and, uh, confirm with the board and the board members, but, uh, uh, just from my own personal, uh, perspective, knowing that this was going to be presented tonight and um, having a little bit of, uh, some backstory to what we were to expect, I'm, I'm all worth, you know, personally, uh, supporting this.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, Madam Chair, members of the board, and thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for, for allowing me the time. Uh, I really do appreciate it. Um, we had the kids out there cleaning out the secas a little bit more instead of being on their cellphone, social media, maybe some stronger next generation.
I would agree, I would agree.
I have one other comment I want to make, and I would like to see this on the next possible board agenda, that we can put it on. This picture that you showed, this one, my niece, who's a teenager in Denver Public Schools, she, this is she. They've been in suicide lodge at the school, so if you ever need anyone to testify, I would be honored to be that. I, our family lived through the results and it was directly related to social media.
Madam Chair, I appreciate you being vulnerable and sharing that story. I, I, I'm sorry to hear that and
She's good now.
She's good now, but I, I don't know that the superintendent knows this because, uh, I don't remember exactly when you started, forgive me, Dr. Layton, but you know, one of your colleagues, one of your colleagues, um, buried a child. And, and it goes back to social medias, why that child took his life. That's the child of the superintendent of one of our schools. And this is real. Um, the algorithms are addictive, to your point, Mr. President. Uh, and, and the consequences are very, very dire when they end up in the extreme and and it's here in New Mexico. It's, it's not just in the big cities, big communities, it's, in fact, that superintendent was from the rural district.
It's, it's, uh, you know, cement in my mind, the reason why house goes in is to continue to um, follow the steps that we've taken with our social, with our cellphone policy and which completely relates to it and, um, um, it just, it's, uh, unfortunate, the, the lives that it negatively impacts, you know, um. Unfortunately, for a lot of people, it's a little, a little late for, for those families that we can positively impact, you know, and standing up for what is right. Um, hopefully that, uh, we can save some lives, through the process.
You know, we, uh, you know, I, you know, it's like anything, you start, uh, school, uh, before you even start the school, you have pre-k and that's where we're at with our cellphone policy. We need to get more, uh, I said, guardrails, awareness, um, and, and also get better, you know, our community. I mean, this is something new, so I, I totally concur. And it sounds like to me, uh, obviously, once we do the procurement, there's no charge, all right, Mr. Cologne, so whatever you can do to help us actually get better in those regards of guard, of student outcome, it's huge. I mean, uh, this should be limited to hours max and kids are, I mean, and it's sad. They have it with them when they go to bed and you know they're not sleeping. I mean, and, and so it's like, this is something that it's fine to take to fall away. You may get some friction first couple of days, but then it's a, a habit thing. You know, we have our, our daughter put it in my, uh, her mom's, uh, bathroom. That's where it's at, you know. We know where, you know, and they'll, they'll be coming out with that because it's hard. It's, it's, it's something that they, you know, you see the kids now. They don't talk to you, they're looking at their phone. There's no conversation. I mean, they're written, you know, the O Gs talk to each other, but the kids are like, they all look at each other and they're sitting next to each other texting. Yeah.
Thank you, Member King. I would like to shake your hand.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Again, we might as well.
Appreciate that. And, and, uh, I will, and my cell numbers on my car, just for you to call, text.
May it force through with you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
Mr. Cologne, I just have a quick question right following. So, you know, in regards to, um, as this moves forward, the litigation, um, knowing that there's been if negative impacts by families that have been affected like this, such as, you know, suicides and, and so forth, the mental health. Um, is it a purpose to possibly hold these people accountable with maybe monetary, um, compensation, uh, when it gets that far, you know, if it's ever ruled and I'm sure that, there's probably steps where, you know, you, you can't just be, they can be just handing out money to, to everyone that wants to be say that this has happened to them, but is there that possibility?
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, Dr. Layton, I would say that there are individuals who have been attempting to bring what we call personal injury wrongful death lawsuits, um, against the media companies, that they have been unsuccessful to date. Um, and we are limiting our representation of school districts to try and recover resources so that you can stand up stronger barriers between the students and the social media. And to do additional education, have additional social workers, these are the kind of damages that were on that slide that we're trying to get for school districts. Uh, but I do think that that case is coming. Uh, the challenge, I think it's that they have bumped into in the past is that it is very difficult, particularly causation. Uh, particularly as we came out from the pandemic, there were so many issues for young people in terms of mental health. It's very difficult to make the direct causation to say that this was the correct cause and effect. I think that case is out there and I'm happy to visit with any family that's going through that kind of pain. Um, and see if, if I'm not in a position to represent them, I'm certainly happy to try and connect them with somebody who is. But I'm not aware of any cases that have gone to trial. There may have been some that have settled pre-trial. Uh, but I'm not aware of any that have been successful at trial as it relates to individual personal injury or wrongful death against social media. That's an excellent point. Mr. Superintendent, I'm sorry your word is so engaged and I apologize for taking a bit. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you so much. Okay, uh, let's move on to item eight, student outcomes, um, Rontus Elementary, Dr. Madlin, Sarah No-Mon Karma.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Board President Flores, Vice President Spray, members of the board and Superintendent Layton. So we're excited about great news happening at Rontus Elementary School. So we'll start out with oops, go back, with student achievement. So we just got our beginning of the year and middle of the year I Ready scores. And so we're really excited that, um, for reading, our students have gone from sixteen percent to twenty-eight percent at or above grade levels. So that's our green level. We're really excited about that. Um, forty-one percent of our students are one grade level below at middle of the year, so that's in the yellow category. Um, and then we have gone from forty percent of our students to thirty-one percent of our students are two to three grade levels below, so they're in the red. So we're starting to show a decrease of the red, which we're excited about. Um, grade K and one, no students are in the red. So all of our students are either in the yellow or they're green for kindergarten and first grade. Um, in math scores, we went from four percent to sixteen percent of our students are in the green, so they're um, at or above grade level in the middle of the year. Sixty-one percent of our students are in the yellow category. And in the red category, we've gone from forty-five percent to twenty-four percent. So we're seeing a decrease in that red level. And then grade K has no students, um, that are in the red. So our Ks are really showing a lot of growth and we're really proud of them. And so we're starting to have our students look at where they're at. Are you green, yellow or red? And so we're starting to have our students look at where they're at. Are you green, yellow or red? And what are your goals? So we're having them really work with their teachers. To create their own personal goals. In terms of attendance, ninety one percent of our students are in tier one and two. So that's exactly where we want our students. Of course, we would love a hundred percent in tier one, but. Ninety one percent are in tier one and two. Fifty nine percent have been absent eight days or less of the school year. And thirty two percent have been absent seventeen days or less of the school year. Nine percent have been absent between eighteen and thirty days, and those are the students that are. Attendance coach has really been focusing on. We've been sending letters. We've been meeting with parents. We've been calling, talking to families directly and to students directly about how important it is. For school attendance. We have zero students that have missed thirty days or more, so we don't have any students that are at tier four. Some of the initiatives that we're working on is, as I stated before, teachers are working collaboratively on increasing student proficiency rates. By data analysis and also student goal setting. So as I said, we are trying to get our students to really focus on where they are. On their scores and personally setting their goals. Where do I need to be? We're having a map March Madness at the beginning of March. We're going to have a math competition and so students are going to have a competition in math facts. And also with word problems. And so they've been practicing their math facts. And we'll be working on that the beginning of March. In February, we're working on no tardy February. So we're offering an incentive for all the classes. So any class without a tardy will be getting a party in March. So we are going to be looking at that in all February. Right now, we have about three classes that don't have any tardies whatsoever. And we're also helping classes that have excused absences, like there was a doctor's appointment and those those things. Account for no tardy February. As I said before, our attendance coach is tracking all of the tiers, but especially we're focusing right now on tier three. Where nine percent of our students are in tier three. We're having a spring fling dance because we're so proud of our students who have. I don't know why this isn't advancing. We're so proud of our students that have not. That are increasing their I ready scores in math and reading. So they're going to have a dance right before we leave for spring break. Our ski club students, our ski club has finished at Rancho's. And so we are going to have a celebration for them and their families. So they're going to have a meal. We're going to have certificates and all of that. On April ninth, we're going to have a college and C T E fair. So we're inviting colleges to come to our school. And also businesses. And we're really trying to focus on career tech ed. And so if you know of any businesses or any colleges or any. Community members that would like to participate, it's going to be on April ninth from one to three P M. Okay, the next, okay, the next. And we're really excited because our school celebrates all cultural events and February is Black History Month. And we were fortunate to have a drumming group from Africa come to our school and perform yesterday. And we got that through the public education department. So we really thank PED for helping us. Secure the drummers to our to our school and our students were just so excited about it. Our classes are also completing research projects and biographies of influential African Americans throughout history. And so they're going to be presenting those soon and displaying them outside on the bulletin boards. And our third grade in particular have learned parts of Dr. Martin Luther King's I Have a Dream speech. And so they're really excited about presenting those. That is it for my presentation. I stand for questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Martin. Any comments or questions?
In regards to I Have a Dream speech, that's going to be when, regardless of the third graders?
Is it there? It's probably really now at the end of the month, so next week they'll probably be presenting those.
Is it going to be in the gym or in the class?
In the classroom.
Just you have my email, right?
Yes, I do. I'll send you information. Thank you.
Yeah, and also. I appreciate Dr. Marlowe Serna of your. Always transpose your name. I'm I'm sorry, Dr. Serna Marlowe of of the goat in Chicago. Can you give us a little history of that picture?
Yes, when I was a senior at Notre Dame, we had our senior formal in Chicago. And one of my best friends played football and basketball for Notre Dame and he said, you know, the Bulls are here in our at the hotel. Would you like to meet Michael Jordan? And I said, you don't know Michael Jordan? He goes, yes, of course I do. So we go to the Bulls party and Michael Jordan's there and my friend Joe says. And and Michael's like, Joe, Joe. And I was like, oh, my God, he really knows him. So we walk in. And they were McDonald's All Stars together in basketball when they were in high school. And so I asked Michael if I could take a picture with him. We're the exact same age and he said yes. And so I still have that picture from nineteen eighty five. So I'll be celebrating forty years of. We're going to have a reunion in June, so I'll be going to South Bend in June, but I still have the picture and he signed. The only thing I had with me was my invitation. So I still have it to Madeline from Michael Jordan and that's when he still had hair. So I still have that picture and my students wanted to see it, so.
That's great. So you have it up. You have it. You have it so they can see it? Great. And also I want to compliment you on researching other prominent African American. Figures in in the history of regards of the black diaspora, besides Dr. King. You know, Dr. King's the. The pinnacle, you know, we could say, but there's a lot more current that the kids can research and find out also.
We do also have a huge display in our library of, you know, people like Vatanji Brown. And so we're really proud of that as well.
Well, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Quickly say congratulations on your success in reading and I reading my math supports. And it's always, you know, impressive to see the attendance in the ninety one percentile, so. Congratulations on that. And it seems to me like throughout your reports that incentives seem to generate positive outcomes for you. And especially with the students, you know, having pizza parties or ice cream parties and and things like that. I have one, I'm born incentives, you know, motivation, all of that. I have a boss who hates even the word incentive. But I mean, this is evidence and proof that, you know, like a little, a little motivation goes along with it.
Thank you so much. Our our student, our the culture at our school is very competitive. And so I've really tapped into that in terms of, and it's always friendly competition, so they really enjoy that.
Yes, Secretary.
I always enjoy watching movies. And one of them was, I think, the Underground Railroad. And I can't remember the the lady. But that the starred in in that movie and and roots that went on. You know, and it's just so, it it just takes us back and it gives us some history. Because I know that it was very well researched, but to see it current, it's always nice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Sernan. Oh, yeah, certainly. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Just to echo the comments of former Concha, you know, the success that your school is seeing with these improvements to. Other percentages on these various. Scores is must be commended. Your school is making very great strides. And I just want to commend you on on your leadership and your passion for what you do and your creativity. Again, you know, former bunch have talked about the activities that you have at the schools and. You know, they're very engaging activities and what's nice is that that you're creative. And your the school site is rewarding students that exhibit positive behavior and you also don't leave behind those students that need. Attention or some behavioral addressing in some nature. Rancho's has really grown under your leadership. There was a time, you know, where all all of our school sites have had their struggles. And the leadership that we have at our our schools. I'm very proud to say is great leadership. And then just something I wanted to add to. I was approached by a community member who gave me a call yesterday that the school is having a community career day.
Correct. So our school-based leadership team is very involved. And one of our parents, Lori Lee Archuleta, has really taken it under her wing to start calling businesses and. And people in the community. And so we want our students to learn about not just college, but what's. What's their career opportunities in Taos? And so we're inviting people from the community to come. It's on April ninth. From one to three, and we're really going to focus on the third, fourth and fifth graders. And then have some people come into the individual classrooms of the pre K through second graders.
Well, I was very honored to get a call from Mrs. Archuleta and ask to be in attendance. And she also asked me if I could recruit some community members. So I just wanted to mention that and if the board is available. I know we we all have busy schedules. I plan to attend. It's again, it's April ninth from one to three. All of us are careers, community career people that. I'm sure our backgrounds in history and and the work we've done to get where we're at, we collect some of that. And to our students as motivation, if they can serve their community. So I would encourage the board to look at the calendars. And then again, just thank you for all the work you do there at Rancho Elementary and the students and families that you positively impact.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We appreciate all of your support. Thank you so much.
Dr. Marlowe, I'll be happy to be there.
Excellent presentation, Dr. Marlowe. For the invite, so if we can send it to our office so that I can share that with the board.
Okay, we just finished our letter today, so we'll send those out right away.
And then if I could just add, so we were at our board conferences last week and they encouraged those in the workshop that I was in to look at. The New Mexico Vista scores and pick a school from within our district and, you know, we're actually being close to my heart. You know, former Mustang and and I was a little bit of a muck out when I went to Rancho, I will say, but that. But, you know, I learned from those.
Were you tier one?
I did attend school, my family coming from a former school board member as a grandmother and my grandfather was a principal, like you had to be in school. But I looked up the New Mexico Vista scores of Rancho's and they were very promising. You know, there's always work to be done, but. Looking at Rancho's scores and New Mexico Vista's website, just wanted to note that 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 they were. Promising and they weren't below what we were.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President. All right, Cyber Magnet. Principal Carla Martinez.
Vice President Spray, President Flores, she will be online.
Oh, okay. Hi.
Claudia, will you tell me when she's on?
Yeah, she's not. She's actually right now.
Good evening. I'm just trying to get my technology to cooperate real quick. Thank you for your patience. Apologies for not being there. President Flores, Vice President Spray, members of the board and. Superintendent Dr. Layton, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share with you the updates at Tau Cyber Magnet. We have been working closely as a team to address some of our systems and operations. And over the last several weeks, we've developed a vision and mission statement, which we have on the board and. The vision for Tau Cyber Magnet is to find a path for each student so that each student can have a promising and successful future. And our goal is to make sure that regardless of what that path is, our students have the supports that they need. We included that in our mission. And then, as you can see, we developed a purpose that just provides a little bit more detail. Identifying the unique educational environment that we provide for our students and our families. And really trying to match the supports for our students, identify high quality. Instructional leaders and match them with our students regardless of where they're coming from. And making sure that we address their goals for life and make sure that we're able to. Move them forward in their high school career. Looking at a student achievement, we are happy that we have been able to secure a position for a language arts tutor. And I'll share with you our I ready data in just a little bit. But this tutor slash interventionist will be critical to provide the supports for our students in. Reading and comprehension, vocabulary, all the areas that we know our students need additional support. I'm happy to say that over thirty percent, again, a small, a small school, but one student means a lot. We have one student who made honor roll, three point five and above, and then four students who were able to meet honor roll between three point oh. And three point five. And so this is a huge achievement for a lot of our students, considering a lot of the challenges that they're. They're dealing with on a daily basis. Our pass rate for classes, we work really hard to focus on passing courses. Because that is the path to graduation for our students. In math, we had a ninety three percent pass rate. In science, a hundred percent pass rate. English Language Arts was a hundred percent and Social Studies was ninety three percent. And I will note that even though at the end of the semester in math and social studies, we had. Some of the classes that had not been completed, the students were able to receive an extension for the semester to go ahead and complete those courses. So right now, with math and social studies, we're sitting at a hundred percent completion from our semester. One courses, it just took a little bit longer for some of our students to complete that work. Our I ready data, I'm I'm just going to say it's it's not where we want it to be, both in reading and math. We definitely have some work. But I will share that what we have identified is that our students in returning from their winter break. Were in need of some social and emotional support. And so I'm just going to say our short cycle assessment was not priority for several of our students who were struggling with. A variety of other concerns. We did go ahead and assess all of our students that we could, but attendance, displacement. There's a variety of things that our students were struggling with at the time. However, we are looking at our I ready data and identifying areas for intervention and support with our new language arts tutor. As well as with our math tutors, so that we can identify how to best support our students to to show some growth at our end of year assessment. Educator excellence, our lead teacher, Ms. Mari Chavez, who's amazing, has accomplished her master's degree in October. And now she has also completed her level three micro credentials, which means that she'll be moving into level three licensure. We have our two math tutors who are former teachers and also hold endorsements in math, so they're highly qualified. To provide those supports. And our new ELA tutor interventionist is also a former educator. With Taos Municipal Schools in Northern New Mexico and holds endorsements both in language arts and social studies. So we're really hopeful now that we have somebody on board that we can begin to provide those interventions that are needed for our students. Family and community engagement. This last week, we completed a time at Taos Ski Valley. Some of our students were able to ski and then four of our students opted to do internships at the valley with different businesses. We currently have five students who are attending U N M dual credit courses, U N M Taos. And we have planned a Northern New Mexico College visit in this spring, most likely to occur in April. And then we'll continue to work with the hardwood and Taos. And then we'll continue to work with the hardwood and Taos Land Trust. Now that the weather warms up, our students will be outdoors again and taking advantage of the opportunities that they have because they're directly located in town. Culture and climate and welfare, our students, again, are working closely with our lead teacher and our tutors to develop some of the skills that help them work through the challenges that they face. We do social emotional learning activities two to three times a week. We're currently working on a plan to roll out restorative practices at Taos Cyber Magnet and to provide training to our teachers. And then we have weekly check-ins, daily check-ins, but we're also providing progress reports to families every single month. And then that helps parents and tutors and everybody be aware of where our students are and what supports they might need to continue to be successful. Now, in March, our lead teacher and two of our seniors will be visiting our feeder schools to talk about Taos Cyber Magnet. And then we plan to hold interviews in April. This is a new part of the process to attend Taos Cyber Magnet. Our goal is to ensure that students who are coming to Taos Cyber are fully aware of the resources and supports and that it's a good match and that we can provide all of the the tools that the students need to be successful. And we're we're thinking there's going to be about six positions in the fall. And then just to end, we're looking at systems and operations for the school site, year calendars, budgeting, wrapping up, review of our ninety-two plan, MLSS. A lot of this is work that hadn't been documented. And so we're looking at documentation and revision for the school site as a whole. And then here's some, the best part, at the end, our students at Tusky Valley, some of them at their internships with the kids center and then others who are working on their ski skills. And with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you so much. Board comments, questions? Member Concha? Secretary Junho?
Well, I'd just say that the numbers speak for themselves. They're doing amazing. And just the recruitment and the place that Cyber Magnet has made in in the high school. I think that just there are children that are kids that are just just reaching out to those kids that just fit Cyber Magnet. And just being able to just allow them to be themselves and to to just be a part of the school because they are, at the end of the day, they will be they graduate and they can attend the ceremonies and they can be a part. And but what has been afforded them is what is what best suits them to be able to excel and and be proud of what they've accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Junho. It was ladies first. Member King, you have anything you'd like to say? It's ladies first in this lineup tonight.
Yeah, it's very encouraging, Ms. Martinez. And it's great to hear about in regards of Ms. Chavez, because the kids, they can, kids are students, they can feel the success. I mean, you can't really they have that lateral line like a fish or an animal. They know when someone is telling them the truth and they can feel the energy so that Mrs. Chavez just got her level three and just finished her masters is very encouraging. And I'm very encouraged with the numbers. For the superintendent, is that the, I said the billion, you're looking at in regards to Conio? Yeah, we haven't got the funding, but.
So we haven't quite discussed that yet.
Oh, okay. But, okay. So it's great. I'm just glad to see that you guys are doing excellent work. The students always look happy. We have photos. There's nothing like going to the museum. The hardwood is closed, the library. So keep up the great work, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. I really serve a support role for Ms. Chavez and our tutors. I see the amazing work they do daily. And my goal is just to lighten their load and remove some of the barriers that they encounter in order to best serve our students. So thank you.
You're being modest.
I love, I will say, I love the opportunity to hang out with the kids when I get it because I do miss being in the classroom and they're just a joy to see in the hallway and tell me how they're doing. So I do love that part.
Yes, Ms. Martinez, I want to echo the same comments that I directed to Dr. Shunam Marmol. I want to thank you for your leadership. The caring, compassionate environment that is established at Cyber Magnet, hearing you speak about, you know, the social and emotional support that was given to these students upon their return back to the classroom. I really appreciate you recognizing and acknowledging that, you know, at that point in time, it was their well-being that was most important. And I think we, as a district, need to recognize, you know, the mental health and the well-being of our students. Because if they're not feeling right and if things are bothering them, of course, they're not going to be performing well in their their studies because their mind's going to be elsewhere and their emotions are going to be elsewhere. So I just want to thank you for that and just recognize what you're establishing there at Cyber Magnet. Want to give some kudos to Mrs. Mari Chavez for achieving her master's degree that's to be commended and you know, it just goes to show too, as adults, we continually learn and, you know, aspire to grow and achieve things such as a master's degree is just phenomenal. And then in regards just to the activities, I really feel that it's important and for all of our school sites to recognize the importance and the healthiness of getting outdoors when we can and allowing our students to participate in some form of outdoor activities, getting out in the sun, you know, smelling the dirt and feeling the wind is important. We just had a presentation about cell phones and so forth. And I think a lot of times our students go home and they tend to follow negative behaviors in this form that they watch a lot of TV or stay indoors on their phone. So just encouraging that outdoor activity, I think is very important. Thank you for all you do for those children at Cyber Magnet. I look forward to seeing the enrollment grow and, you know, with more students attending, they get to feel the positive impact that you and Mrs. Chavez are providing there. So thanks again.
Thank you, President Flores.
Thank you, President Flores. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Martinez. It was a great presentation. Cyber Magnet, as you know, is one of my favorite areas of the whole district. I love that. I love going to visit in there.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your support. You guys have a
coffee for the kids that you all have each other. All right. HD is ready. I Ready Beginning and Middle of the Year Student Outcomes, and it's going to be presented tonight by Melissa Eager, who's the director of federal HC. Oh, those are just to review. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I missed that. Okay. Does anyone have anything that they want to bring up? Something? Did you review the other campus reports? And did you want to make any comments? I'm sorry. Thank you.
I just had one quick question and not to take up too much time. I wanted to see if Mrs. Heda or high school, Martinez, they headed up, could just share with the board how Flex Fridays are going.
Oh, absolutely. Our Flex Friday program, semester two, has really changed as far as our pathways are concerned. So in semester one, students really were able to kind of have the experience of doing, you know, taking on different opportunities. But now for semester two, we're looking at pathways. So if you're interested in the health pathway, there are four sessions on a Flex Friday which is tied to Power School, which is a huge, huge success for us because in the past, documenting our attendance was a little bit more difficult because you had over seven hundred students and they all had something different going on as far as internships, dual credit, workplace readiness, or tier one and two onsite opportunities. And now it's aligned with Power School. So the grading will be there. We're really focusing, our main focus is on our attendance for Flex Fridays. There's no issues with the opportunities out there for students because our community has really stepped up to be able to support us. We have a very strong partnership with UNM Taos. And the students continue after our career fair, which I think Dr. Layton will mention in a little while. We had so many other students that I wanted to go into the field of EMT. I want to get my OSHA certification. I want to do a ride along. So they were really excited. One even was exciting. We had a student, a high school student, that she has health issues and she was going to the hospital and she met the people there and offered her an internship in the very place that she had an appointment coming up. So that's all great. The one issue, I think it's across the board, probably for all of our schools, is our chronic absenteeism rate. So we're really looking at how we can enhance the communication with parents to focus on how important attendance and the tardies are for our students on a daily basis. So we have a letter ready to go out. There's one specifically for Flex Friday. So students that feel that they can oh, have appointments on that day or, you know, like not be actively engaged in that day will have that specific information that's tied to the points of attendance and grades. And then on the other hand, we will have it out to all of our students because we want to just make sure that we strengthen our attendance across the board. But it's been really exciting, some of the opportunities that the students are able to participate in, and it grows, it grows all the time with the, you know, where students realize, oh, wait a minute, I want to start, you know, taking advantage of this. And those students that are in school, those ones are the students that have either chosen to do dual credit, which we have probably tripled our amount of students, and not full credit, I'm sorry, credit recovery. So those that were missing credits, we focused on our seniors first, and now we're increasing those numbers dramatically. So there's a lot of different public aspects going on with their
Well, thank you so much for that.
President Flores, Vice President Spray, I mentioned that in collaboration with Masemee, we're looking at different opportunities to start collaborating and even a community to create more pathways. So we're currently in discussions and different programs. So just so they can it may be coming down the pipeline, just how we can increase our CT opportunities.
Yeah. And that's what I'll present on during the high school presentation next time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And I apologize for missing that when it said review. And I know that we all review that. That should help. Never make the mistake of not asking for questions again. Because once embarrassed, never again. Okay. Now we're ready for Ms. Eager. Yes, do you have something to say?
I want to just give a shout out to Mr. Medina, Chiquita Royals, the birthday, just reading about the third grader that was sounding out words, just, it was beautiful. You know, it's a game changer.
He's online also.
Dr. Medina's online. Okay, so he can hear it.
So that was
Hear the shout out.
That was very encouraging. So I appreciate him sharing that with us.
Thank you for pointing that out, Medina. All right. Anything, anyone else have any comments? All right, Ms. Eager. We had the third time to charm and we've waited patiently for you. Thank you for taking us up tonight. Appreciate it.
President Flores, people numbers, superintendent, beauty numbers. When I talk to you about the iReady short cycle assessments, our middle of year review. Okay, so if we look at our overall picture for reading, we are improving our scores. You can see the striped green line is above grade level. The green line is at grade level. The yellow line is one grade level below. The red line is two or more, or two, and then the striped red is three. Three or more grade levels below. So this is reading. You can see in the beginning of the year, we were seven percent, we're at or above grade level. Twelve percent, we're near, and went up to eleven percent above, eleven percent above grade level, sixteen percent on. If you look at the, you also see the same growth at the other end. So if we're looking at the striped red line, which is our three grade levels below, we had thirty-six percent. And now we have thirty percent. So we're moving people in the direction that we would like them to be going in reading. And this is our district overall. So this is all of our schools.
That's great.
Can I use a clicker? So if we look at district overall in math, we do see that we had a lot more space to grow in math, but we do see that we are moving in a positive direction in math. District overall comparing beginning of year to middle of year. So if we're looking here at the beginning of year, we had ten percent that were either at or above grade level. And now we have, I'm not wearing my glasses. I think that's sixteen percent. It's eleven and five, right? I can't tell if that's a five or six because I didn't wear my glasses up here. So math, we see some positive growth.
We do. We definitely
It takes a team. Okay. So if we look at overall for reading, for Taos High, we see some positive growth here. I would really like to express my appreciation as a person who's been working with presenting Taos High Formative Assessment data has been really difficult to get and to report in years past. So Taos High has made a really concerted effort to be sure that they're getting more students to take this test. And they're trying to get more students to take the test seriously so that the data that we're looking at throughout the years looks better. I mean, like we actually know what might be happening from the data that we're collecting. Which I really appreciate because I have to talk to PD. So if we look at BOY here for reading, we have nineteen percent. And then they grew to twenty-three percent at or above. And then if you look at the far end, you can see that the three grade levels of below has also decreased significantly. Hey, this is their math. We have some growth here as well. You can see the red strike line was at sixty-three percent and now it's at fifty-nine percent. So that's three grade levels or below. So we really want to see that change. And I know that the math department's really done a lot of work to make sure that their kids are scoring better in numbers and operations. I know they're showing a lot of growth in numbers and operations. Okay. And then if we're looking at BOY to MOY, you can see that on the green side, that's also growing. Hey, this is Taos Cyber Magnet. You had Ms. Martinez kind of talk about some of their coming back to school adjustment time. So we had, we're pretty much saying we stayed close to the same in reading and decreased in math. I would say also because they are so small, if one or two kids are having not such a good testing day, it's going to show a lot more than it might in a bigger setting. Here's Taos Middle School reading. We can see a lot of growth in the three or more grade levels below. So they were at forty-six percent, now they're at forty-one percent. And then we had twenty-one percent scoring in the green up to twenty-six percent. Hey, here's math. Math, we're showing overall growth. That growth is mostly happening in our students who are scoring three or more grade levels below. Because we're going from forty-seven percent scoring three or more grade levels below to forty-four percent. Here's Arroyos in reading. So you can see Arroyos is up to twenty-nine percent at or above grade level. He started at twenty percent. Arroyos math. Yeah. So you can see we started at only six percent at or above grade level and now they're at fifteen percent at or above grade level. And also nice growth on the other end of the spectrum where you're at eleven percent, the three or more grade levels below. Now they're at five percent. One thing to realize about iReady when we're talking about elementary schools is that they're talking about three or more grade levels below. So you can't be three or more grade levels below until you've been in school for a while. So that's just a piece to think about because sometimes you look at that data and you think, oh, the elementary schools are doing great work. But you can't compare directly to the secondary schools because of the way that iReady codes it. But you can't compare directly to the secondary schools because of the way that I already codes it. Okay. Enos is showing some great growth in reading. Particularly in increasing the number of kids who are at or above grade level. We're at what? Thirty-four percent from seventeen percent. And we've got some good growth there in Enos. So five percent at or above grade level to sixteen percent at or above grade level in Enos. Here's Rancho's. Rancho's is also showing some really good growth. They have twenty-eight percent compared to sixteen percent at or above grade level in reading. Okay. Math is also showing some really good growth there. Four percent to sixteen percent in math at or above grade level. So I stand for questions.
Any questions or comments?
I just have some comment, you know, I, I've seen the, these positive numbers, um, that only reflects our, on our students, but also on staff. Um, you know, in this book that we're reading, it's been shared about behaviors, you know, is really what leads our children's behaviors. In one of the workshops that I attended at the school board conference, it talked about, you know, the continuous reflection on data and reviewing of data. And, um, we've been seeing a lot of data over the course of the school year. And this is just a testament to the hard work that staff is putting in. Um, and I just want to commend staff and also commend the students. Uh, I believe in the initial presentation at the beginning of the year, uh, staff and Dr. Ray about wildly important goals and like five percent, uh, increases, kind of what we're looking at was it like five percent? A lot of the numbers we saw was more than five percent. You know, and but there was a lot of positive growth. And of course, you know, there's some instances where maybe you, we didn't see the growth, uh, that we had hoped for. But, uh, that doesn't exactly reflect that the students aren't, um, growing, uh, as a student, as a human being. Um, so just, uh, want to commend all the staff and thank you for presenting tonight in, uh, in the instance that you needed to present and appreciate you.
And if I may, I just, uh, President Flores, I would like to add that, uh, the administrators and the district leadership, we had a training last week on I-Ready. So we really dug into more than just the overview picture that you just got right now. We looked at rates of growth and we looked at where our areas of strength and where can we get better? So that was a really good training that we have.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Have a good evening and appreciate you.
I don't know who we can rely on.
Not on all things.
All right. Uh, okay. I, superintendent report, Dr. Antonio Layton June.
Uh, Vice President Sprig, President Flores, so it's, uh, honored to be presenting each month on our student outcomes, uh, starting with foundational goal one, student achievement. And to talk about, uh, student outcomes now, at this point, we're talking about district enrollment. So at the last board meeting on January the twenty-second, I believe you already have the copy of the presentation. Uh, we had an enrollment of seventeen eighty. And again, I'll be concentrating on the second semester.
Am I ahead of the game?
No, you're, you're right. I can, I can use the clicker. Will it reach?
I can solve. Last one, last one.
Okay. And so let's see. All right. So the last board, board presented on the twenty-second, we had enrollment of seventeen eighty. As of today, we have enrollment of seventeen eighty-three, which is in addition, additional three students. I did want to note that from December, we're up seven total students. So just wanted to make sure and, but you know, we seem to be increasing and hopefully we keep that, uh, keep that increase going. Uh, next slide. Foundational goal, when we talk about our, our attendance, uh, we did take a small dip in this one in particular. Week one eighty-five, week two eighty-one, and so on and so forth. Our overall ADA though for the year. And remember the ADA that I present is the overall. We're currently at eighty-six. So seventy-nine percent was week five, which gives a a two percent dip on our overall attendance. But I do know that our attendance coaches are doing their, their best in making sure that our kids go. I can attribute some of this to the local illness that we've been experiencing, uh, even some relatives of our own are experiencing some of that. So just know that our kids are doing their best, but we have had about a stomach flu, regular flu and
colds.
Colds, yes. So we'll, we'll keep working on, I'll stress, excuse me. So we'll be working on those pieces, but nonetheless, I wanted to make sure to present to the board exactly where we're at, regardless of whether we do go up or down.
So, excuse me, the overall ADA, that includes the first semester? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay.
So for each presentation, I will always give you the overall attendance for the year.
Thank you. Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes. All righty, moving on now will be our student achievement with the campus that had the highest student attendance. And that will be for this month. Arroyos.
I'm glad you did it. Cause I win it for you every.
If we look at the percentages, Arroyos just barely squeaked out from Rancho's by just a couple of percentage points. So they do win this month's, uh, highest student attendance. So therefore the kids will be receiving a treat for this coming month. Up next, now we work towards foundational goal two, which is education, educator excellence. And the highest staff attendance, which I had to do by decimals again, that's how close it is. We have Arroyos winning again.
Hey, close though. That was.
But that one was real close. So just by a few, I would say a couple of staff members. And I know Dr. Marble is looking at me and I know, uh, Dr. Medina there online has pretty much got a big old smile on his face. I believe so yesterday. So the staff will be receiving a breakfast burrito on behalf of the district.
Let me know when that is.
For the psychist. So up next, continuing with the superintendent's report, we go to foundational goal three, family and community engagement. Uh, I wanted to focus this month on the Taos High School Career Fair visit that we had. There's a picture there with some of the kiddos. These, these kids in particular were the, I believe interns for our district attorney's office. And so the career fair, the looks on the kids' faces as they were inquisitive about either colleges, workplaces, uh, there was just a whole slew of events going on and a whole slew of tables to present. I also did ask our principal, the secretary, to see if she wanted to speak a few more words about how it went for the career fair.
Superintendent May, President Flores and school board members, I apologize for missing that when I first came up here. Um, we were really excited at Taos High School February. We, um, we had, I believe on the twelfth, I think, um, we had over forty guests to the high school. And this was with our annual career fair. So you can see a little bit in the back of, um, the, the team that we had attending and we had from businesses, um, to the medical field, the, um, Holy Cross Medical Field. We had Kit Carson, we had military, um, Navy, Army, um, we had colleges, we had Adam State there as well. Um, the day was really nice. We had a morning session. So all of the students were able to visit for at least for a little bit under an hour. So they were able to visit with every single one of the presenters that we have there. Um, the presenters are community, solid community members that, um, attend our college and career fair. Last year, we probably had closer to seventy and this year, um, we were just kind of rebuilding it because the position has changed hands. Um, we don't have that position filled right now. Um, so Mr. Quintana was the one that he had done in the past. So then he took it over thankfully and did a really good job. There's a really pretty nice article in the Taos News, um, with our honor roll students plus the career fair. Um, we also brought in, we hosted, um, incoming eighth graders. So they could visit the school as well. So we had the middle school come in and they, they were, um, they were brought around by our leadership students. So they got to see teachers and where the principal is and meet all of these different, you know, students. And it was really great. So we even had our police force there. So students have the opportunity to be able to walk around and kind of explore and expand their opportunity. If some students said, I want military, well, you have three different options of the military to go check out. If they wanted the medical field, Holy Cross Medical had at least seven different from their EMS to their radiology. Um, and it was really nice. Cause as I mentioned before, they're offering our students internships. We had community workforce solutions, our workforce solution. And they partner with us really strongly with their Flex Friday because they can pay students for internship work that they do on Fridays. So it's not just the volunteer or it can be volunteer, um, but it's really, it's really nice. And one of the things that I want to highlight as well is Adam State, they're hosting an engineering day that some of our science students learned about then. And they're, now they're actually, we were presenting about fifteen to twenty students. Gear up was there, bridges was there, banks were there, um, our rafting people were there. So it was really nice. And, uh, it was really well put together. So I appreciate the opportunity to share with everyone. And Dr. Layton, thank you for, um, attending. And next time we'll make sure, um, our board members are aware of the date. So you guys can come check it out. Yes, absolutely. If you can join us. I stand for any special.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Is the career fair some, a one-time event throughout the school year? Are you going to have another one possibly or?
We only, we usually always have it around this time of the school year. We used to have difference in my time there, we used to have a health fair. And then we used to have one for Flex Friday. So all of the people working with our Flex Friday or all our community partners, um, would come in. So this way, that way the students could be able to see what's out there for them. Our, this year, it's not a career fair, but this year, um, our counseling staff is asking and teachers are asking so, um, to create something that we students are aware of the classes that they can enroll in. So for example, if you want to, um, enroll in our agriculture class, then you're able to kind of learn a little bit more before you enroll. Our welding, our, you know, um, our, a lot of our CTE classes, because you typically have your core classes, you know, understand the expectations. But the expansion of our, our, um, vocational and our CTE, when I want our students to really engage in these pathway of idea, the ideas. That way it just builds and we're graduating our students with obviously their high school diploma, but their honors, their certifications, that their dual credit that they have under their belt. Their years of experience, which hasn't happened before. So it's really, it has, but like to this extent, it's really exciting. And these wonderful students were at the DA's office. So we'd see them in the newspaper and all really nicely dressed up. And now the DA's office actually even has a new round of students that, um, have, are with them, working with them. So our partnerships are strong and it's really exciting what the kids, what the kids are doing in our community.
Thank you.
So President Flores, Vice President Sprig, representative of the board, um, this has been a little bit, uh, like I could say a little conservative. We had two hundred and sixty-two of our seniors that actually are, as could be two hundred and sixty-two students who went to this career fair, which is a wonderful opportunity for them. So about forty percent of the student population was able to visit different aspects of that potential. And, uh, it's to be commended, uh, the increase is there. That way, you know, more kids get to see different opportunities. That means they have different choices. So when they graduate, the families can make those decisions on what's best for their future. Uh, but I'd like to also tie in how, uh, this is into our CS student outcomes governance trainings as we start looking at the strategic plan. And so that training that we're going to be attending or that we're going to continuously attend to make will help us as a collective look at how we can kind of center the strategic plan around increasing our CTE components, pathways, uh, as well as other components. So just wanted to make sure and bring that in.
I recognize, uh, Homer McKing daughter in the picture. Yeah, it's a, it's beautiful kids over there. Yeah, said that to me. Uh, superintendent told me that he caught her in there and, you know, um, just to, we did have a chance to go to the awards. The kids all got from the DEA's off, DEA's, uh, what DEA's office, uh, Mr., uh, Montoya, and it's interesting guys, because you've been in the courthouse, right? You walk in, you gotta go through the security. But when you go into the uh, in regards to the DA's office, it's like going into, uh, Wonderland. I mean, they have this, and not everyone gets to go in there. I mean, you, but once you go through security, it's like this very inviting environment. Um, and, uh, it was neat. The kids, um, they were given various projects to do. Um, and it's some of their work is shown actually through the state. And, and the DA, he goes through all of us conferences and there was another DA and another community had a junior, uh, workshop and he says, I'm going to bring that back to Taos. And so, uh, it's nice and it's, I was very impressed because Camille is a freshman. And I, and you know, the Lord class, they had quite a few freshmen. So it's great. It's nothing like starting out on the right foot. So I, I was, uh, we were, uh, very impressed and she enjoyed it, uh, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Member Train. Would you continue, please?
So on our next, uh, next presentation component of the superintendent's report, we focus on foundational goal four, which is family and community engagement. And I like to emphasize that this past Sunday, we did have our Taos Business Schools Auxiliary Job Breaking. We did have our governor that as well that came to honor our past, our, our, Dan Dan Maroney, Coach Dan Dan Maroney. Uh, it was a very good event. I would say it's something that the community, uh, we had over about a hundred people, everyone being over there. And so it was just a good start to what we anticipate will be a wonderful facility that we're going to have our kids be able to take advantage of and flourish in the different programs. So just wanted to go ahead and share that with you this Sunday, uh, Maria, she did live stream it.
Yeah. So I was just fine. Very sorry.
Apparently I think we have almost if not over five thousand views. So just so that you know. So. And with that, um, last foundational goal four. I wanted to talk about the continued climate, climate, wellness and school safety. Uh, Taos Middle School is on one-to-one superintendent board member site visit with Vice President Sprig, who went to go visit the campus where she was adopted. And so we got a chance to visit different components of the school and have some good conversations. Uh, so it just shows the the, if you can see the picture, you can see what kind of, uh, the way I like to call it animo, uh, that the school does have. So I wanted to share with you all. And of course I encourage each of our board members, if you would like to make your one-to-one visits, I'm more than welcome to to take that time so we can visit our campuses together. And for that, I stand for questions, for the questions or comments.
Questions or comments for the superintendent?
In regards to the Kanyon building, you said you
do not get.
Oh, not yet. Okay. All right.
Yeah.
I didn't see it over here. So.
Yes.
Vice President, Madam Chair, um, Superintendent May, I just want to thank you for, um, keeping attendance, um, first and foremost, uh, with an eighty-eight percent overall district average for attendance. Um, you know, that is something to be commended. Of course, you know, ideally, who would it want one hundred percent? Uh, but you know, education is a challenge at this day and age and getting our students engaged is challenging, but eighty-eight percent overall average is, is, is good. And, uh, appreciate that. Staff attendance, I, I think it's amazing that we're, we're paying attention to that. Um, there was a time in the district and of course we still have subs in the classrooms, you know, it's something that it just goes into the territory. But, um, there was concern for, you know, staff not being present and to recognize staff attendance and to see Rancho's and you know, uh, Rosado Norte, neck and neck, um, you know, creates a, some competitive atmosphere. Uh, you know, the middle school right there, ninety-seven point five, Rancho's at ninety-seven point eight and ADN at ninety-eight point two is, uh, to be commended also. And, uh, thank you for visit, getting out and be, being seen, um, at our school sites. Uh, when I first came on the board, um, the superintendent that was, uh, under contract at that point in time, there was a lot of, um, a lot that was shared with the board at that time that they never saw the superintendent. And he didn't visit the school sites. And, uh, unfortunately that was one of the reasons why his contract was not renewed. Uh, so, uh, appreciate you getting out there and being seen. And, uh, with that, you know, um, maybe your contract.
Well, it's it, but.
Thank you. Comment. Nice. Nice question, Alora. I'm in a nickname you see this get, you're, I know you're going to overcome, you know, that you're going to beat Medina at some point. It will happen. You have a big heart.
You have to offer blood, that's. More, I love it. Alright, um, moving on to item J, board policy review, Dr. Layton.
As part of our continuation uh, per month, uh, so just reviewing different policies, uh, in this particular order, the board shares in the school board policy, be ten fifty for superintendent relationship. And we continue to keep growing our relationships, especially after my last board break. We establish, I'll just more ahead of reading, board policy be ten fifty, uh, for superintendent relationship, establishment of policies that are responsible to the board. And the execution of those policies is a function of the superintendent. The superintendent is the chief executive officer of the district and is responsible for the professional leadership and skill necessary to translate the policy of the board into administrative action. The superintendent is responsible for the administration of the district. The superintendent may delegate the necessary authority to other places and develop such procedures and regulations as their superintendent considers necessary to ensure efficient operation of the district. And uh, about it was the date of the manual adoption. So I just wanted to bring that up, you can see the foster our board superintendent uh, relationship through the course of the month and, and of course, hopefully the course of the next few years, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question or comment, um, that I believe it's very important for the board and the superintendent and individual board members to foster their own unique relationship with the superintendent. We're all different. We all have different views. Um, sometimes we don't always agree, uh, but it is important, uh, for board members to, and the superintendent to reach out to each other and um, you know, try to continue to work, to try and be on the same page. We might not always be on the same page, but if we uh, have that, you know, maybe the, the vision, where we wanna go and we try to work together to get there, um, it'll benefit staff and the students. So I just wanted to commend this board too. I believe we have a very uh, positive board that has uh, the student outcomes uh, at the forefront and just want to thank the board for working so closely with the superintendent and all that they do.
Thank you, President Flores. Good comment. Any other comments?
Yeah, wanna give superintendent kudos, uh, with the uh, regards of dedication at the auxiliary gym. I mean, it was um, professionally done as well as heartfelt. I didn't know what to expect. Um, it was uh, uh, it was really uh, uh, touching. I didn't know Dan Dan, uh, we gave him a scholarship. When I was in the Rotary Club, he was our first scholarship recipient, even before the Chili Challenge. And uh, it's just, you know, uh, the sadness for, you know, a young person, a pass, so young, but just the love, you could feel the love. And everyone who showed up, it was uh, we, we all left with our heads up high. And I thank our governor for coming, you know, just how big landwise New Mexico is, but how small. It, it, it was uh, it was a, it was very, um, the two board members that missed it, you, you missed something special. It was, I was definitely uh, proud to be part of that ceremony. Thank you, superintendent.
Thank you. That's a very nice comment, Member King. Thank you. Alright, new business, we're gonna, I'm gonna try and, let's try and get through new business and consent, cause we're, we're at eight o'clock right now. We're doing good so far. Alright, new business A, discussion, consideration and possible approval of best education consulting LLC for ten literacy coaching days to support Inos Garcia at twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars, Melissa E. G. Again, Director of Federal Programs, Loveham.
President Flores, school board members, superintendent Layton, community members. I have before you new business, discussion, consideration and possible approval of best education consulting LLC for ten coaching days. Inos Garcia has, has participated in several professional development opportunities to improve literacy learning, including letters training, CKLA implementation and PLC training. This coaching is designed to help teachers use all of those resources together. So these ten coaching days would be to help them figure out how best to use what they've learned in the classroom. I stand for question.
Any questions on the board? Nope, aren't you lucky?
Well, dude, Missy here, in regards to the other, the other proposals, they're just in there. You chose.
You have three, you have three quotes in front of you. Best education consulting is the best quote. It is the lowest price for ten days of coaching and we get two coaches. The other, the other ones would be only one coach.
And I, and I noticed the last one, you could barely read the proposal. So, yeah, okay. I was just kidding. No, it's fine. That's probably a sign of the work that they probably gonna do. Um, so, no, it's great. I, I was just confirming that.
Alright, does anyone want to move to approve? Well, I'm sorry. I'm getting used to this. I'm sorry. Dr. Layton, what's your recommendation?
Vice President Sprig, President Flores, members of the board, uh, I recommend the approval of best education consulting LLC for ten literacy coaching days to support Inos Garcia for the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred, as presented by Director Federal Programs, yes, E.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the new, uh, new business to, uh, for approval of consideration for best education consulting LLC for ten literacy coaching days to support Inos Garcia for twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Thank you. Second, please. Oh, second. Thank you, Secretary. Alright, Anna, you're up.
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Kevio?
Yes.
Vice President Sprig?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Um, you, you might as well stay right where you are. Alright, next discussion, consideration of possible approval of early childhood literacy supplies through Lake Shore Learning Materials LLC for our early childhood partners, including District Pre-K's Little Bug Learning Center, Talsbobo Head Start, YDI and the GRAD program at thirty-four thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Again, thank you, Missy here.
President Flores, school board members, superintendent Layton and community members, I present to you for your discussion, consideration and possible approval, the purchase of early childhood literacy materials through Lake Shore Learning to support our early childhood partners. The CLSD grant has supported our work with early literacy efforts for our birth of five partners and our birth of five learners and their families. These supplies will be used by our early childhood partners to support early literacy efforts.
Okay, board members, any questions for Missy here? No, I don't have any questions.
And no.
Okay, Dr. Layton, what would you like to present? Would you like to say?
I recommend that the approval of the early childhood literacy supplies through Lake Shore Learning Materials, LLC for early childhood partners, including District Pre-K's Little Bug Learning Center, Talsbobo Head Start, YDI and the GRAD program in the amount of thirty-four thousand two ninety-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, as presented by Director Federal Programs, Melissa E.
Thank you, Dr. Layton. Would anyone like to make a uh, motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the early childhood literacy supplies through Lake Shore Learning Materials LLC for early childhood, for all early childhood partners, including District Pre-K's Little Bug Learning Center, Talsbobo Head Start, YDI and the GRAD program in the amount of thirty-four thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, as presented by Melissa E., Director Federal Programs.
Second.
Thank you both, board members, Anna.
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Kevio?
Yes.
Vice President Sprig?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
Thank you, Anna. Alright, item L, consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review these minutes that we're looking to approve?
Yeah, I um, I wanted to discuss, um, the, yeah. I don't think most of the, the minutes from the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Kevio?
Yes.
Vice President Sprig?
Yes.
Yes, um, first, I just wanna recognize the amount of work and time that it goes into preparing the minutes, uh, by Miss, Mrs. Anna, um, Ms. Royale. Uh, definitely our meetings are long, some board members, including myself, can be long-winded. They try to capture, um, all that is stated and summarize it and put into the minutes is, is a big task. So I do wanna, uh, thank you for that. Ms. Royale, but I do want to make a motion to table the approval of these minutes, uh, to address just some grammatical and careful, um, items in the minutes, uh, just to state, you know, these minutes go into historical records. And if, um, we do wanna make sure that we try to do a, a second reading of them um, prior to being submitted to the board, I just, uh, think we should, um, in regards to some of these here, um, I know it's a lot of work, so it's not, nothing to, uh, just, if we could just do a, a review of them and then bring them back to the board. Nothing major, they're, they're, it's clear, just, uh, if we vote to approve them now, I'd just be concerned that they would be put into the record with those um, minor, they're just minor things. Um, there's so much that goes into them, so I, I must commend your work and I wanna thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time to look at them and.
They're actually really good. They're just some, some small things and uh, I sent out an email today and I had a little misspells on it and, you know, it, it's, it's, uh, just, we all make some mistakes with, uh, so there's a lot of context in these, there's a lot of work. Thank you, Ms. Royale.
Thank you, President Flores.
I concur. You do a great job, Ms. Royale. And I talked to superintendent, I mean, it's a lot and depending on where we're at. So, well, for sure. So there's a motion to, uh, just table these to the next meeting.
Second, I'll second it. Anna?
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Kevio?
Yes.
Vice President Sprig?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, Anna. For sure. Thank you. Alright, um, item L B is approval of task model, or task management school district VAR's budget adjustment request.
For discussion.
No, we don't have to. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, we don't have to. So, um, what is your recommendation for the consent agenda, Senator?
As presented, the only two items that are included were L A and L B.
Correct.
So as the board made, uh, proof of consent agenda is presented, all pool for more further discussion.
Okay. Anyone willing to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion. I can approve the, uh, the task management school, uh, the TMSD VAR.
We're didn't, we're not pulling that out. We're doing a consent agenda.
Okay, oh, no, okay, babe.
Do you wanna do the motion for the consent agenda?
I, I actually wanna pull the coffee maker and maybe talk about that for a minute, cause uh, item C. Uh, and it's not really something to approve, it's just the, uh, I just wanna know what happens. Regards of a, in regards of a deeper dive, um, as board member Sprig.
Should we pull it if we're gonna discuss it? Okay, you wanna make a motion to pull that?
I make a motion for item, um, uh, I don't know, item L, uh, L, item C, I believe it would be.
It would be.
Yeah.
I'll second it. Let's go.
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Kevio?
Yes.
Vice President Sprig?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm ready to discuss, yeah. I, I talked to superintendent about this and I'm just, if you can, superintendent, you can give us some more insight about how this happened, uh, we'd appreciate it, but.
Well, again, uh, Member King, Vice President Sprig, President Board of the Board, this was pretty much what this, so there is a, it was an accident. Just fell over and uh, one of the things that, of course, we always try to strive for is near perfection. Uh, this was just happened to be one that fell over and broken, is no longer applicable. And of course, anything that we dispose of has to go to approval anyway. So this is why we placed it on the board, but uh, we are taking, making sure more efforts are being made to not have those accidents. And again, as we strive for near perfection, it's great, but uh, accidents, time to time do happen.
Uh, appreciate that. Was it loaded wrong? Did it fall off the table? Was it just, are you gonna give us some?
It was addressed to me when they reported it, that it had, they were moving it from one area to another, so it fell off the truck, like in the moving of, into the truck to move it to another area. It's what Mr. Mord wanted, it's rather than the smallest.
You know, if anything, you know, I know things happen and uh, but if we can just make sure there's enough manpower, you know, uh, I'm sure those guys and just try not be in a hurry. The weather's been very cooperative this winter, as you know, we haven't had a lot of snow, but you know, just think of it, you know, remind them that, hey, if that was your coffee maker, you know, cause uh, and they, you know, hopefully they're, they look at things that way. Uh, I know sometimes people like, it's not my, uh, clue bit, I don't care, you know, uh, so.
So I remember getting, uh, President Flores, members of the board, in our, our maintenance operations, they get taken great cares just to make sure everything's taken care of. But again, go back to accidents as much as we try, every now and then, but I will say that in the time that I've been here nine months, this would be the first time that an accident was up. And again, it wasn't in route, but we'll take great care, but they do take and I'll be, I think it happens to make sure all the problems they.
Been the first that I've had a report, so that means they're doing pretty good.
Yeah, this is, I haven't seen it. I just was like, I'm looking at the cost of the coffee maker and was like, wow. Okay, I'm fine.
Yeah, so, so item C was removed, then it's a consent agenda, so for discussion.
Right.
So now that it's been discussed, we can go ahead and uh, move with approving item C.
Separately.
Separately, and then there's only one remaining item on the consent agenda. Um, so that will be separate.
Thank you.
Comment, uh, we dissected the consent agenda. I know that Superintendent Lane tries to create a consent agenda for ease of flow. Um, if there's any questions and myself included, I could have brought this forward sooner, uh, to the superintendent. But if we have questions, sometimes, um, if they need to be discussed at board meeting, then we'll go with that. The consent agenda is put in place so we could, uh,
Right. So in other word, i- if you look at the agenda ahead of time and any of you think you're gonna wanna pull something from it, you should let President Mark know ahead of time, or me know ahead, one of us, so we can communicate with each other. And we'll pull those at the very beginning of the meeting, so we don't have to do it during the meeting, okay?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so now we're get, we pulled item C, we're gonna now, um, do, we're gonna now move to approve or not approve the authorization to dispose of equipment.
You know, more coffee machines.
Was, was, go ahead. I'm sorry, Dr. Layton, what do you, what would you like? I'm so sorry.
Vice President Sprig, President Flores, members of the board, I recommend, uh, the approval for authorization to dispose of equipment coffee machine for a K A eight hundred labor station, uh, as the president or as discussed.
So moved. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, Anna?
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Kevio?
Yes.
Vice President Sprig?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes, and as an aficionado of the coffee, that does hurt, but.
Especially it's sour. Okay, Dr. Layton, yes, Dr. Layton, with regard to item B on the consent agenda, what is your recommendation?
Uh, Vice President Sprig, uh, President Flores, members of the board, recommend consent agenda L B, be approved. The TMSD VAR's budget is suspended request.
Okay, so moved. Second, please. Second, thank you.
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Kevio?
Yes.
Vice President Sprig?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
Okay, next. Okay, next item on the agenda is item N, executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
We need to make a motion to, to, I want to executive session.
Go ahead and, uh,
Read it?
Read it out.
Okay. M, person, section ten fifteen one H of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, section twelve six five of the New Mexico Audit Act, and section two point two point two one five A three, N M A C for the auditing firm and superintendent to update the board regarding the status of a special audit. Um, we've got, the move, I'll, I'll move that we move into the executive session, second?
Second.
Thank you, it is now eight twenty one. And Anna, would you tip up for the real call?
Board member Puncho?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Truul?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
Thank you, Cass, thank you, let's.
Um, on that, um, I'm hoping for that as far as the, those financial reports?
Yes.
Just keep them in this and then. In the, in our packets so that they don't have to be. Again?
Isn't that the next one we need to?
Well, you're gonna need them.
Thank you. Okay, the board's back from the executive session and we need a motion to re-enter public session.
So move to exit executive session for the record it's 10:41 PM.
Second.
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spree?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
All right, I demand your business. The board discussed an executive session and agreed. The consensus was to agree to extend the completion date of the deadline of the special or the forensic audit. As well as discussing whether or not to expand the scope of the special audit and we did have a consensus to agree to expand the scope of the special audit. As that and that we talked about nothing other than that in the executive session. Okay, future topics.
Any future topics from the board or any just to be sure there is no motion? Were there any motions?
We did.
Okay, and was there a vote?
So, um, no, there was no. So, let me see where's my agenda, sorry, quick. Um, so I would like to make a motion. Um, in reference to items N A and N B as discussed in executive session. To extend the completion date deadline of the forensic audit. And also to expand the scope of the special audit as discussed in executive session.
Sorry, I thought you said, I thought we just had to say what we did in there. I'll second it.
Board member Concha?
Yes.
Board member King?
Upstate.
Uh, Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spree?
Yes, thank you.
President Flores?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, future topics, does anyone have any future topics that they want to have brought up? No, I, I would like to repeat the future topic that we've been talking about when you asked for our goals for the. For 2025, I'd like to remember to put that on.
That was an oversight on my part in working with the superintendent to create the agenda. I would take fault for not doing that, but yeah.
I'd like to have it on, I'd like to have you hear what we're doing.
Oh, no, I think it's important that the whole, the whole, the board identify goals. So if we could include that superintendent on our next agenda and I, I would like to bring up, I think it's a good point where, time where we need to look at having a. A special meeting or a workshop at some point in time to review our strategic plan. Um, now that we're in a new, uh, calendar year.
Definitely.
Um, you know, I don't believe that we've spent some time within the last. Six months, um, in reviewing our strategic plans, so I think we could just look at solidifying the date. And that didn't allow our superintendent to also chime in because of friends, this. Forensic special audit, the strategic plan was developed prior to his, um, arrival. And I think it's important that we allow the superintendent to chime in and maybe help us. Continue to develop that document.
Um, I have a suggestion. And that would be to, to do it in a special meeting. Because this way, it's, it's in the public. And they could be kind of engaging with us in, if they're present. And it would be a good opportunity and I don't know, at our conference, there was a, um, a session on the strategic plan. I didn't attend it because I, you can, it would get, I was attending something else, but it would be interesting to see. What the presenter, um, how the presenter presented the strategic plan and maybe that person could. Could be one of our, our guests, speakers.
President Flores, Vice President Spree, members of board, just a reminder that part of that CES student outcomes governance is to it. At the closure to develop a strategic plan based on the new student outcomes goal, so that is part of the process as well, so we'll continue that.
Okay, well, also somewhere along the line, I heard someone saying that we should reduce it, make it more simple and more easy to follow. Was that at the CES? That was there, okay. Thank you.
Did anybody, uh, sit in on, on, um. Pasqualito?
Yeah.
My thesis is.
Sort of.
Did you? Did it add anything to? No, 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 I know that.
That's what he hinted on smart goals.
Who, in the session, or did he? Well, that would be interesting to, to have that dialogue with, with, with him.
Okay, so any other future topics for right now?
And this kind of goes in twofold, I give, I give each of you.
Yes, I was gonna.
The opportunity, so. You want me to read up or?
I was just gonna ask you, yes, to, to explain. I had a concern or a question because it said upcoming meeting would be March 19th and I believe that we're having a meeting on March 8th, aren't we?
Correct, so, uh, that'll. The future topics and upcoming meetings are kind of like intertwined, so I think with permission of the board I can kind of address both.
Sure, sure, thank you.
The eighth on Saturday originally was for a finance.
Correct.
Meeting, so that, what I drafted here was an itinerary because during this past weekend when we went to the conference. CES reached out also to see if they could provide a one and a half hour follow-up training to the board members who weren't able to attend the first one. So the itinerary that you see here is eight to nine thirty for the CES outcomes follow training. The finance committee would be from nine forty-five to eleven forty-five, which was originally agreed at the last board meeting. And then a work session after that regarding board norms, and so this is just a proposed itinerary. Um, but I say that because March 19th is spring break and I brought it up on the last board meeting that. We may want to adjust that, given the fact that there's a March 8th finance committee. I would propose that if we can move the board meeting of the 19th. Uh, to the following, the week after spring break, since we have the eighth.
What is the date of the? One that you want to move to, twenty what?
Twenty-six would be the week after. Now, having said that, I hate to be the bearer of word use on this one, but. There is a possibility that a special board meeting, uh, will be requested for the fifth of Wednesday. On a topic of personnel, so.
March fifth?
Yes.
Okay, well, I have a couple of questions, first of all, since this would, your proposal here would, would require three of you to come earlier than the rest of us.
Yeah.
Does that time work for the three of you?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yes.
It would just be.
Member Concha, is that good for you?
Member Concha myself.
Okay, so you, you got that one, you got that one through. Um, and then I had a question about what work session on board norms, what does that mean?
So one of the things I was going to recommend to the board is to, we kind of revisit board norms on the form, like when we talk about board meetings. I know there was concern about the length of the board meetings and so when we talk about the length of it, board norms also means that we may have to. Consider adjustments to what we place on there, how we want to partition it and so. It's just something that as a collective, I can't make that determination, but as a collective, we can start to say that. How do we want to have board meetings so that we can be efficient, but at the same time?
Effective.
Effective, correct.
Okay, that's a good idea. Mm-hmm, that's nice of you to open it up, but it's mostly, it's something that between you and the president, you guys set the agendas, right?
No, board, board norms are, you know, uh, just behavior in board meetings, I think just addressing of board, uh, you know, maybe, you know.
I see where.
Our comments, responses, directing them to the subject at hand.
I see what you're saying.
Refrain from maybe talking about ourselves or our past experiences, you know, we all want to share with. We just need to stay on topic, stay on point. I'll miss Rial with her minutes by shortening our remarks.
Saying so much.
Yeah.
Extra stuff, okay, I understand, thank you for explaining that, so March fifth.
I can bring my phone, I left it there.
You're asking us to check for March fifth, possibly, March fifth is a possible?
So March, uh, March fifth is a possible.
Okay.
Uh, the eighth, when we're talking about inviting the council, uh, Washington, that would be for the eighth. The board members.
Is it going to be considered a special meeting or a workshop?
The, the eighth would be a work, uh, finance committee meeting, it would be a workshop.
Okay, that is a considered a finance committee meeting.
The finance committee meeting would be separate from.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I'm sorry.
Okay, and then you're asking us to also double check our calendars for the twenty-sixth?
And the fifth, yes.
The fifth is Ash Wednesday.
Correct. The idea would be just, uh, if it's a possibility, it's just a, an update that I need to provide you in executive.
And what time on the fifth?
Uh, I can, to the board, I can have it as early as five or thirty, but of course, I give priority on the work schedules.
Can we make it a, the fourth or the sixth? I, I, I think. Also, President Mark, he says you always have a council meeting. So the, maybe the sixth. Cause I know where I gotta mass.
Does the sixth work for you and what?
I'll, I'll go particular council, but I believe it does.
So does the six, six work for the majority of us?
Like five, five thirty?
Well, it is, is early as five, four thirty, as what I can ask the board if it's okay with you. First choice, the sixth, if council cannot make it on the sixth, would the board be amenable, amenable to considering second option of the fifth? Uh, cause I don't have that information right now.
I'm okay with the fifth, I don't observe last Wednesday, so.
The seventh?
But I do have a four thirty on Thursday, the sixth, so maybe, maybe that's the chosen day.
What about even the third?
Oh, no, I'm good, I, I have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are busy for me.
What time's council meeting? What time's your council meeting, that's President Mark?
They're at six, um, I don't believe that, um, they're. The second and last Tuesdays of the month.
Oh, the second, so the fourth works then. Cause that's the first.
The first and the other, or is that the third?
On the fourth is the first Tuesday.
A Thursday.
And, and that's where I would check with council to be sure that they can.
So, I said board member Concha said, um, she's got a four thirty, but on the, on the fourth is the first Tuesday, so. That seems to be open for you, right? Cause there's no council.
I'll confirm and I can get back to superintendent tomorrow.
Did, Dr. Layton, didn't you say that, that council will be here on the eighth?
Uh, yes, that would be.
Why don't we do them both on the eighth?
Cause they're two different councils.
What is the more ones? Uh, the other guy who goes. Well, let's see on the fourth then.
The fourth is what day?
Tuesday.
Well.
Five o'clock, what do you think, an hour tomorrow?
Okay.
Of halftime?
I'll, I'll provide the options and then give the board individually the best one that we can get at a time.
It sounds like the preference first is the sixth.
Six would be better.
The fourth, I can't do the fourth if it's, at four PM I have a meeting I have to go to on the fourth, so it can't be.
And if it's.
What are you thinking?
Can you do six?
Five or five thirty?
Member Concha, and if it is, happens to be Thursday the sixth, it has, it will be after a certain time for you, for you, correct?
Yeah, I, um, on Thursday? Yeah, good. I can do this.
So, so I'll check for the first, on the third, the three, six, second choice would be Tuesday, if possible.
I can't be there though, my meeting is for four to six.
The next second option would be the fifth. And I'll, but again, I'll, I'll provide that information to the board.
So you don't have to worry about.
Or you could do it on Tuesday at the sixth then.
No, but.
I would, board member Spree, on the fourth, at six o'clock, then she can make it.
I could be here by six fifteen.
Yeah, six fifteen.
Till the sixth.
Let's say six fifteen.
Six fifteen, and that would cover you, you wouldn't have to worry about Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm, I'll let the superintendent know if we have a meeting, but.
Okay, okay, all right, let's move on to, the other thing is, is everyone available on the twenty-sixth that may be? To change the meeting from the nineteenth to the twenty-sixth?
Of March?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, for the sake of, um, of, um, I'm available, of the holiday.
Yeah, the spring breaks, the seventeen.
Yeah.
Can you do it, member Concha? If it's for next year, we should avoid spring break.
I would absolutely.
Do our calendar.
Hello, all right, so school board. Do we make a motion to make all these changes? Not yet, no, thank you. Okay, school board, it will be six PM on the twenty-sixth, right?
That will be right in turn this week.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, good, good, good. Even outside. Are you done, Dr. Layton, with changing our light for lunch?
Just for the better.
Just for the better, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Color is it?
Blue.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like, where's my pen?
Yeah, do you want to adjourn?
So move to adjourn.